Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one matter has to do with personnel, the rec department.
I have one thing too I'd like to bring up.
Concerning?
Personnel issue, first of all.
I move to...
Hi Butch.
Hey Butch.
Hey guys.
Do you have a motion to avoid the executive settlement?
Seven minutes. Oh, I'll make the motion. You want to watch?
Yeah.
I'll make it.
One second.
Whatever.
All members say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Discuss panel need to amend agenda.
Mr. Chairman, there was one matter that came in just, I think, yesterday and it's time sensitive. And so I would propose, if you're willing, to add to the agenda consideration of the adoption of a VLCT resolution requesting federal assistance to municipalities for the COVID-19 response.
And that it?
Yeah.
Who else?
Make motion we amend the agenda as discussed.
Accept the amendment, accept it as amended? Is that what you wanted to say?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All members say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
See John?
Yes, Butch?
Again, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Yeah, you're across the room from me. I put you up at the front so the selectman can hear you best. I'm going to put the speaker phone on maximum. I'm standing over the phone now, I'm sorry. Social distancing.
For the meeting minutes, are there any additional questions or questions for the meeting minutes? Any none? No?
I think I had to slide my spot up in this little cubby in this area, but block the camera.
It's okay.
It's all right? It's about 60, I think. We're full going. Yes. I hear you. Ouch. I'm coming closer to you, Butch.
Because I also don't like to hear them all.
We haven't said anything worth listening to yet anyway.
No, we're just signing papers here.
I figured that's right.
Mr. Chairman, your orders, any questions on the orders?
Let me make one thing clear, Mr. Chairman. Two weeks ago, selectman Dania asked about the fine department purchase of a Saozhou battery. Apparently, that turned out to be a Saozhou with three batteries plus a chainsaw. That was all combined in that one item.
That makes more sense. Sounds better.
Yep.
For the orders that are in front of us here, I'll beat Dave to it, I guess he was going to ask too, the registration of the Boommobile $240. Is that just for the registration or is that for something else with it? It seems like an awful lot for registration.
It's a five-year, there's something wrong with that.
Is that a five-year vanity plate?
Yeah, but still, vanity's going to be on full paper, isn't it?
Is it state of Vermont? Yes.
Am I correct, Butch?
It's $32.51.
Yep.
Butch, you recall, did we run into that one other time?
Yeah, we did. One of the things that we learned before, wanting this registration, it's like a seven-year D or something. Worth looking into.
Yeah.
Yes, I have the renewal registration, 240 bucks. That's all I have in front of me. If you'd like, I can find out more to the story and report back to you.
I know, we've done so this before, I remember. But I don't call it.
I suppose that's seven years, it's not quite as bad, but...
I think it was five or seven years. Pretty sure it is.
It simply shows the expiration date of 2020. Doesn't say. Registration, yeah.
It should show when it expires next, right?
It says it's the Cadillac 1971 Ambassador Model UT red and white, gas, VOL plate. That's all I have here on the form. But I can make inquiry and get back to you. Yep.
Any help on the orders?
Oh, I did have one question. I had written down here, actually, two. Without any sports and that stuff, why are we paying somebody to be a basketball rap?
I know basketball is now being done at the...
Oh, it is?
Yeah. And I don't know where this particular fee came. Randy will be along shortly, so that might be a question you can answer for you.
Okay, and I guess my other question was the Millbury College ski program.
Yep.
That was another question I have.
That was the first two weeks of the program. The last two ended prematurely with COVID and forced no conditions. So that was the first two weeks of it.
That was, okay.
Commander of the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As of Monday, June 1st, the town has a new health officer. His name is Richard Bowman. And his information can be found on the town's website. We'd like to thank Almia, Keith's Country Store, Bradley Keith, Randy Adams, and everyone else who took some time on Saturday, May 30th, to collect litter along town roads and help celebrate Green Up Day, which is, I think, the 50th anniversary of it in Vermont. So again, thanks to all who participated, especially the sponsors of the event. On Thursday, June 4th, I will be meeting with the town's bookkeeper and the leadership of Pittsburgh First Response to discuss plans to integrate PFR's operations into town government. We will discuss the need to transfer the property on Arch Street. We have a D already written up. And to transfer responsibility for bills from vendors and service providers, among other things. We'll also discuss how best the town can interact with PFR's leadership going forward, like we do with other department heads. The town of Chittenden has asked the town to renew for another year its policing contract with the town of Pittsburgh. Town manager has submitted a new contract to the town for its review and approval. And this features a 3% increase in the hourly rate, so we can continue to enjoy something of a markup on that service. On the other side of the discussion of policing in the region, I can report as to Proctor policing that we do not have word yet on the COPS grant we've applied for. I'm told by Chief Warfield that we probably won't get an answer until about August 1st. So I notified our contact and the Proctor Select Board, Carrie. And she understands, and I think their plan is to renew with the sheriff on either a limited time basis or with flexibility for them to opt out if and when Pittsburgh learns and if and when Pittsburgh makes a proposal based on a COPS grant that might come in. So stay tuned for more information on that. Lothrip School plans an end-of-year goodbye event from Monday, June 8th, from 6:30 to 7:30 with kids and parents in cars waving goodbye to Lothrip staffers positioned along the roads and in parking lots around town. I've agreed on behalf of the town to allow them to use town's parking lot for that purpose on that evening. And finally, we have gone out to bid with the Village Sidewalk project. And I hope that people have a good turnout for our mandatory site visit, pre-bid site visit on June 10th. The bid's due on June 25th and to be reviewed at the Select Board's meeting of July 1st. So again, stay tuned for that. I have confirmed that the engineer's use of the term "bituminous concrete" simply means asphalt. I will point out one additional item, and that's an update from the Pittsburgh Food Shelf. I think Chief Hooker had asked about how they were doing. According to Robin Rowe, things are going well. They're taking curbside pickup orders over the phone. They're giving away food in amounts to last approximately 15 to 20 days. The supply is holding up well. They have had a fundraiser which was successful. Along with food, they're trying to corral and distribute detergent, dish liquids, sanitizer, and disinfectants. She believes there's less demand than we normally might think there would be in these circumstances, primarily because other organizations are also stepping up and providing help. For example, the families of schoolchildren are benefiting from those school food deliveries. Of course, there's been a couple of regional airport pickup events here in the Rutland Airport. And she mentioned that there's something called Veggie Van Go out of Rutland, which is supplying some produce, I suppose. She says the elders are doing well, they are getting help. Robin has been reaching out to them in particular. The library is also donating and helping to distribute items in collaboration with the Food Shelf. Proctor has given some additional financial assistance beyond its normal appropriation. And while the town of Chittenden is struggling and probably can't make an additional financial contribution, Robin reports that many Chittenden residents are donating directly instead. So that's the update from the Food Shelf. Any comments, questions?
Yep. What time is that June 10th Sidewalk visit?
I can tell you, Dave, but I don't know right now. I can follow up with you if you'd like.
Yes, if you would please.
Let me know too.
Sure. Yes, June 10th at 9:00 a.m. at the intersection of US 7 and Pleasant Street. So feel free to join us.
Anything else? Public comment? Public comment?
You still awake there, Butch?
I do, John. Or Hank.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to let you know that the House has passed out the Transportation Bill for fiscal year FY '21. Within that bill, the local roads programs, i.e. the Queston 3 programs, the bridge construction programs, and some of the other water quality programs are funded at the FY '20 level. But I will caution you that this bill, the Transportation Bill, is funded through the big bill, the Appropriations Bill. And we have the Appropriations Committee introduce the bill today for a one-third year budget. Have we seen it yet? It's just introduced at 4 o'clock this afternoon. So I would anticipate, I would hopefully anticipate, that the funding levels that are suggested in the T bill will hold. However, as this COVID-19 crisis goes on, nothing is guaranteed right now. So I would be cautious of anticipation of state funds on some of these programs. They certainly won't go up, and the only place they can go is down. And we'll see how that happens. The state is, we have received $1.5 billion for distribution throughout Vermont in response to COVID-19. That money is well-spoken, or empty on. I haven't seen a second T bill with beds that's in the mill, is my understanding. And there's also another relief building in the mill. So I don't know, I don't know where we're going with this, guys. It's just, I would caution you to be cautious to the extent that you can, because everything's still up in the air as far as state funds go. And then, unfortunately, we're going to have to get off after we've come here. It's really difficult to hear you, so, and I hate missing every moment of this meeting, but, and I do see down the new business, you consider authorizing a letter to support a grant application for the planning commission to do high-stick profit access. I will encourage you to allow the town manager or whomever to write a letter to support that. That's very important, especially now, as we see the weaknesses of our broadband access throughout the town and throughout our legislative district. And this is important, especially in case we think there's going to be some serious money coming to the pest and corporate broadband capabilities. And I think we all ought to be on board for that. So I think those are my comments for tonight, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Butch. My own business, such a COVID-19 response.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I won't belabor previous remarks I've made in the weeks past, other than to remind everybody that the guidance from the governor's office changes every other day, with slight spigot openings, it appears, but the fundamentals are the same. Personal hygiene and hand washing, social distancing, use of face masks whenever in public, and stay at home, stay smart, stay safe for the governor's orders. Town offices have been closed since March 16th with increasing amounts of town staff coming in wishing to be more productive. We have a little bit of a balancing act because on the one side, the governor's office is giving us, that means retailers and offices in general, some latitude, so long as there is a plan in place and BOSHA training to have more occupancy in these facilities, you know, along with washing and masks and distancing. On the other hand, their guidance remains to work at home whenever possible. So we have felt some pressure from some staffers wishing to get in because they feel they can be more productive with more office hours. And so we probably are at the 50 or even 55, 60% office hour coverage, which makes for a little bit more crowded building, but I think everyone's behaving well with masks and the distancing and the social hygiene, et cetera. As you know, we've increased our cleaning here at the building. Rec area events continue to be canceled for the most part with each passing week. Randy will speak to that tonight. We have reopened basketball courts and tennis courts, per governor's guidance, which is good news. We haven't yet opened the swimming hole, but we have had it filled up, and now the usual Ecolite two weeks of testing is underway. And we do expect that that can be enjoyed in the future. The real question, I think, revolves around day camps. And while they are allowed, all of the bureaucracy that goes with them and the likely need for increased staff and higher costs and higher fees perhaps, makes it a very tough slog. So I think Randy will fill you in more as to his thinking on that. Everybody on town staff has taken their mandatory BOSHA training session, and we do again have a reopening plan in place for whenever we decide to reopen the offices to the public. And that's my report on COVID-19, Mr. Chairman. Is there anything else?
I did have a phone call earlier this afternoon questioning when are we going to open the town offices? The question was, maybe, Butch is still on?
Yeah, I'm still on, Tom.
I think it was gentleman that had one of those well land or water drilling grants or something? And apparently they haven't been getting bills and want to know when the bills are going to come out, and so on and so forth.
They do go out quarterly, I don't know that that's interrupted.
There were some of them, but apparently they haven't.
I can check with Pat about that.
Yeah, that was the question.
The next one would be out in July 1st, but I'll check with Pat about the past ones.
So I didn't tell him I didn't know, because I assumed that they would be getting the bill.
Okay, yep. Did you know who it was?
He was down on, I don't remember the name now.
Okay. I will check with Pat.
Yeah, he was going to get hold either you or Helen.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, continue the discussion of anticipated COVID-19, we're looking for where is the final answer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I expect at the next meeting to have a list of budgetary items that, at least theoretically, could be adjusted by the board if you wished to do so, to provide for lower expenses and some relief to taxpayers. So stay tuned, you'll have that in the next packet. And you should be aware, as we will discuss later on the assessor's request for an extension, that we don't expect to see education rates from the state until August 1st. So it looks like it won't be even possible for the town to set its tax rates until early to mid-August. So that gives you some additional time to contemplate how you'd like to deal with this upcoming budget cycle. Who else?
I'm going to review a few bids.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a complex soup of bids, speaking different language and different shorthand usages from various providers. So what I've tried to do in the materials for tonight is to make it a little more simple than going back and forth to all the different providers and all the different bids, and just focus on one type of fuel at a time. You'll see that, first of all, we tried to confirm exactly apples to apples as to what rack pricing was available, whether from the Valero Rutland Rack or the Buckeye Albany Rack, to which some of these producers tie their quotes. So if we start, if you're agreeable, Mr. Chairman, we can start with propane. We have a need of 4,350 gallons. Our current supplier is Suburban, who did not bid this year due to a mistake on their part. And so we're left with bids from Proctor Gas and Kaiser Energy. The Proctor Gas bid is $1.199 per gallon plus labor and materials to connect the tanks, set new tanks and connect them and the gas lines. Or to lump that into a per gallon charge, they would propose to simply bid $1.249 per gallon with no such setup charges, or that being rolled into that number. Kaiser Energy appears to be the low bidder at $1.1901, so almost a full tenth of a cent cheaper, which amounts to a $261 difference based on the propane usage. I'm told by Bill Keough from Kaiser Energy that there would be no setup charges, so that's another factor to consider. Would you like to deal with that first, or you want to maybe have a discussion of the whole bunch?
I'm doing.
Okay?
All right, so I have a question on your numbers. You're saying Kaiser's, I mean Kaiser's is...
Tens, hundreds? Yeah.
Thousands of a cent. I mean, five cents with Proctor Gas between their two things, as far as their price, plus setup for their price that includes the setup, is five cents. That's only $217, so I don't know where you got that Kaiser's was $260 less. It can't be.
Okay. I can try to do some math on that.
Unless I, unless I did it wrong.
But maybe it doesn't matter, putting aside the issue of how well I use a calculator, that is the lowest bid. Would you agree with me there, at least, that Kaiser is the low bid?
I would agree it's the lowest bid, but it's also a variable price versus Proctor's fixed price.
Right, right. So the way I would do it would be 1.199 minus 1.1901 equals 0.0089 times 4,350 gallons. And you're right, that doesn't add up to that number.
No, it doesn't.
It adds up to $38.71 cents.
Yeah, I figured 30, 40 bucks.
Yeah, yeah. I stand corrected.
I think we know where we're at.
Well, we know, yeah, we know where we're at. And I mean, looking at, for me, I prefer the fixed price, but I, and I guess I would go with the no setup charges, because it won't take them long to use up 220 bucks setting stuff up.
Especially at multiple locations.
They've got multiple locations, so just the time.
That's, yeah, because they've got to put out things and...
Right.
I know we've had Proctor Gas in the past, and what I was doing as well, which had excellent service.
I don't recall any problems with them, right?
No, never did. It was always a matter of price. Anyone want a motion?
Need a motion?
I'll, go ahead. I'll make the motion that we go with Proctor Gas at the $1.249.
I'll second that motion.
Through the discussion? All members say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? How can you deny us a carry?
Very good. Next, we have number two, heating oil. The town estimates its needs at 7,200 gallons. Some of that's for the library, we share a bid with them. So Getchup Fuels has bid 19 cents over the Valero Rack capped at $1.71 per gallon, or a fixed price of $1.61 per gallon. Kaiser Energy quotes 31 cents over their Buckeye Rack, which by my calculation of .9790 plus 31 cents is $1.289 per gallon. And the third bidder is Champlain Valley, that's our current supplier. They bid the Valero Rack price plus 15 cents, which again would equate, based on May 28's numbers, to $1.2975 capped at $1.50 a gallon.
I have a letter that Getchups have asked me to read. You would like me to?
Have a look.
I'm going to take my mask off. Read Pittsburgh Fuel Bid. Dear Pittsburgh Select Board Members, we would like to take this opportunity to say thank you for the chance of providing you with a bid on your fuel oil needs for the upcoming season. We'd also like to take this opportunity to express why we feel Getchup Fuels is best suited for the job. Being located here in Pittsburgh, we are able to serve you on a daily basis, offering 24-hour service seven days a week. In addition to oil deliveries, we also have an in-house service department. Our technicians are available for not only regular... Our technicians are available for not only regular annual maintenance and repairs, but also installations and emergency service of all oil heat and hot water units. Our technicians live locally and are therefore readily available on short notice should an emergency arise. They're both very qualified, have received NORA certifications and are constantly taking courses to keep up on the most recent industry standards. Our service department has grown immensely in the last few years, and this would be a great opportunity to not only continue that growth, but also to assist in servicing our local municipal buildings. Being a locally owned and operated company, we in turn support the town in many ways. This includes many donations over the years to local organizations as well as property taxes paid to the town by both the company and many of its employees. While we may not be able to offer the same low prices as our larger competitors, we feel that being a small locally owned and operated business provides us with familiarity with the town and townspeople that gives us an advantage and therefore allows us to provide the best possible service. We appreciate your consideration for our fuel oil bid this year and hope that you will not only take into account pricing, but everything else we have to offer as a small business located right here in the great town of Pittsburgh. Sincerely, Mike and Brian Getch.
Don't make a difference, is there?
Four cents above the rack, which doesn't amount to an awful lot of money. And there is a factor of a fixed pricing versus variable rates. Dave has mentioned that. The, again, the Champlain Valley is 15 cents over rack capped at 1.50 a gallon. So that means we would never pay more than 1.50 a gallon, whereas Getcha's offering a fixed price of 1.61 or a cap of 1.71 over the rack price.
Now, is that cap absolute? So if the price of fuel oil goes to $10 a gallon, we'll stay at 1.50 as far as it is, okay?
That's how I interpret it.
Well, that's how I interpret it, but sometimes in fine print, you're a lawyer, you know, what you've got to sneak in.
I've seen that before from asphalt people, force majeure, things have changed and we didn't buy that.
Yeah.
The difference would be between a dollar and a half, a dollar fifteen, a dollar seventy-one? Looking at that.
Could be, it could be, yes, it could be. Now, does Champlain, who services our equipment?
I believe it's Champlain as well.
They do, they do service, okay.
Is there any way of knowing how big a spread there would be between them or?
Well, again, you can, yes, do the math. 7,200 gallons, again, some of that is library usage. So it's not all for town, but if you take 7,200 gallons and multiply times the differential. For example, Kaiser is actually the lowest in terms of rack pricing, whereas they're 1.289 per gallon as of May 28th, whereas Champlain Valley was 1.2975. So over 7,200 gallons, that's only about $61 a year difference between those two. Gives you an idea of how close some of these numbers are. Getcha, there's a little bit more of a differential there, but.
Personally, this is a few dollars difference. I'd just keep it locally.
Can you speak up just a bit, please?
Significant amount of dollars at stake.
I agree with Joey, you love to keep your business local if you can. If it's not way out of the act, then.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I mean, if we were to do, you know, the heating oil with Getchas and then, you know, they don't have, they didn't do on-road anyway, and I mean, we're doing these one at a time, so.
The difference, as I calculated, Dave, maybe you'll correct me, on heating oil is if you take 7,200 gallons per year and you make the assumption of a four cent difference per gallon on rack rates, 15 cents or 19 cents, that's $288 difference.
Seven, four, twenty, yeah, that sounds better. Well, to me, I mean, I guess, I'm not, I guess, what I feel, yeah, I'd like to keep the business local. And I mean, you're talking 280 bucks. If you have a furnace go down and we freeze some pipes, we'll eat that on the downtime versus having somebody right here in town. I think it's worth at least on the heating oil to give them a chance. So I guess I will make the motion for number two, heating oil at 7,200 gallons to go with Getcha Fuel. I'll second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Question's carried.
Can I ask whether your preference is for a fixed price of 1.61? Peace of mind and knowledge about the future or go on the variability with a cap of 1.71?
Well, yeah, because you're looking at 1.29 and you're looking at 1.29, you're looking at 1.29. What's so, so 30, 30 cents a gallon? It's 200, what, 210 bucks roughly. I don't have a crystal ball to know what the price of fuel is going to do. I'm just afraid with everything that's going on in the country right now, if the supply gets disrupted.
Well, gas prices are going up.
Well, they are going up, but I'm just saying if there's a major disruption in supply, the price could go through the roof. At least on that one, on that one. Locking in at 1.61.
I'll make a motion.
First, we had the motion, we just clarified it.
Okay.
Charlie, can I roll ahead to the same motion, right?
So the fixed price.
1.61.
Yep.
Okay.
Could be significant changes if we don't.
Well, that's it. At least this gives us, when you bring us our budget information, at least some of this though, we don't. It'll make it easier, maybe.
Now, we've got two diesel entries. On on-road diesel, the two bidders are Kaiser Energy and Champlain Valley. Again, Champlain is our current supplier and they are the low bidder at rack plus 12 cents, Valero Rutland Rack plus 12 cents. And that calculates, again, the way I did the numbers, to 1.2575 as opposed to Kaiser 1.36663. So that is a significant difference.
Yeah, that's 1,200 bucks.
Yeah, that's 1,300 bucks, yeah.
Well, I.
How many gallons?
Yeah.
That's 12,000 gallons on road diesel.
I move we go with Champlain Valley on that one.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Question's carried.
And the last one is off-road diesel. And there we have three bids. Getcha has bid the Rutland Valero Rack plus 19 cents. Kaiser or Kaiser has bid a Buckeye Rack of 37 cents over the rack, which translates to 1.3688, whereas Getcha was 1.3275. The low bid is our current supplier, Champlain Valley, at 1.2875. And the difference, I think, between Champlain Valley and Getcha at those four cents a gallon is about 80 bucks.
Right.
Is that 4,000 gallons?
2,000 gallons.
I made a motion to Givecha Fuels.
I didn't hear either one of those.
I made a motion to give the bid to Getcha Fuels.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Question's carried.
Very good. I'll follow up with those companies and let them know.
Next, review of highway truck body bids.
Okay, this is where Chad Heacher wakes up and pays attention. We have truck body bids that came in. Two of them provided rough estimates on the time it would take to attach the truck body to the chassis. But unfortunately, our load bidder, Viking Civus, did not do so. They basically said they cannot do that until we give them a delivery date. Nevertheless, while the other bids are, you know, the 65 to 67,000 dollar range plus, the Viking Civus bid is at $62,775. And I think Chad, you can probably speak to what extent they meet your specifications. Are you still there?
Are you there, Chad?
He said, yeah, then we must.
Then we did. He said, yeah, and then it was a snap.
I suspect he'll call right back. He had told me earlier that he felt that all these bids did meet his specs.
Okay, well, while we're waiting for him, I guess one of my concerns with this is this, there he is.
You there, Chad?
Hello?
Wonder if anyone's there.
Well, I love how that happened before.
Anyone on the side? Let's do it. Let's reboot it.
Welcome and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com. You're helping people address. If you are the host, press please under your pin. Thank you. There is one other participant in the conference.
Hey Chad, are you still there? Are you there, Chad?
Okay, yeah.
Our call must have buzzed out, but we're back on board. We were just about to ask you whether all these bids seem to meet your specs.
Yeah. Yeah, they, yeah, they do. Every company met requirements, so. Like the Viking, the date of the produce, which Bill mentioned right from the beginning, without knowing what the truck could be there, it's hard to say what the truck can be done.
Now, is this Viking, is that who just did the latest body on the Chevy?
It is, yeah.
Now, of, of the two from HP Fairfield, are those equivalent bodies? You've got, there's evidently one body they've already got in stock that they're discounting a little bit for us. And then there's the other body. Are they identical bodies, I mean, other than brands?
Uh, no, actually, the, the one that they have in stock, that MG is the better, the better quality body than the Everglades.
Oh, so the MG is the one they have in stock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah, that they've gotten in for another customer that something happens. Really, I was sitting there. 4,500 still count on that body.
What's been your experience with Fairfield versus Tenco versus Viking on bodies?
Um, good. Actually, I've had a lot of experience with Fairfield. Not with the big trucks they've done, this last couple, 550s. Which, you know, we didn't have any issues with them. Viking, I know, I know that last truck kind of looked bad days, but it took it along. But other than that, they've been good to deal with. Good product and, you know, any service wise issues, they're very helpful. TECO, TECO's been all right. Single Axle Western Star. The latest one we got from them. I mean, they're okay to deal with. Just things like that, truck had a few. Actually, still has a couple little things that are kind of a problem. Minor issues, but seemed like we had more, more issues with TECO than we had with Viking.
Well, there's a much bigger difference.
Yeah, you've heard Chad like I did, it sounds like they've all met the specs and that maybe Viking has been a little bit better relationship than Tenco, which is the next low bidder.
All right.
Just a delivered date on that.
It's uncertain because he didn't want to commit, because he didn't know when the chassis was coming in.
Well, yeah, and then my fear with not being able to, you know, guarantee that, yes, when the trucks come in, I mean, we've, we're going to, we're going to be keeping our truck. And if it takes them again six, eight months, it's not fair to Green Mountain Kenworth.
No.
You know, that's my, that's my biggest fear with this whole thing after this last taste is where they aren't going to say, yes, in 10, eight to 10 weeks, we'll have your truck for you. And they take eight to 10 months. That's not fair to Green Mountain Kenworth at all to not have our truck to be able to sell. That's my problem with them not doing that. And the fact that everybody else can do it and they can't, I don't like that myself, but.
Would we need to take, would we need to hold on to the existing truck that we've got for, that we've got for trade? Or can we use some other vehicle or the, or some other solution without having to hold on to it for a long time? If it is a long time, Chad?
I mean, we have with the 550 that we kept, we have the option of using that brake roof. A little shorter roof, torque to work, good for it. You'll get rid of Dave, regarding that, your concern about keeping it longer, right? When we went with the Kenworth, I did speak with Brent Stilman, asked him about that. He was fine, you know, understood that it takes, you know, it has to take longer, even if we have to go through all winter with it. Once we got done the winter, then we got to a point where we couldn't get by without it until a new truck came in that we could build that roof. So he was more willing to work with us on delivery day.
Okay, now, yeah, now, tentatively, this Kenworth probably would come in, what, in the spring anyway, right, at this point?
Uh, I don't, I meant to call Brent this afternoon, but I have that a little more of an idea that I never got around to it. But yeah, I mean, they were shut down till their delay. I'm sure exactly how much, like, close to a month of their production. Uh... Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I...
Yeah, well, I'm, all I'm saying is, I think, when we were talking about ordering it, and we were looking at close to a year, that it was gonna be, so that's, that's spring. And so, I mean, if you add a month, I mean, tentatively, the truck could come in a year from now. And we wouldn't need it as a plow truck, granted, you need dump trucks, but, uh... We wouldn't need it a plow truck, hopefully, for at least four or five months. So that should give somebody time to get a body before we need it as a, as a plow truck.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, so...
The fact that we got a spare next year.
Well, that helps, a little bit of leeway, yes.
Viking had the whole bid?
Yeah.
Right.
I made a motion to buy the Viking body.
I'll second that, I'll try it one more time. If it takes months again, then...
Then, then we'll know better.
We'll know better, yeah.
Further discussion? Both say aye?
Aye.
If both say no? Hold is carried.
You got that number, Kelly?
Sixteen, two, seven, ten, twenty-nine?
Yep.
Yep. Next is review paving bid.
Okay, Chad is staying with us to talk about paving. The good news is that the low bid we've seen is, um... Six and a half, close to seven dollars a ton cheaper than our successful bid of last year from DNF. This year, the low bid per tonnage, I mean, per price per ton is Wilk paving with a fifteen percent wrap or recycled asphalt product component. And that number is fifty-six thirty-two per ton. The reason why, um, the tonnage amounts are off is that apparently the first two bidders, DNF and Pike, properly bid two-point-eight miles of road, whereas Wilk bid the whole stretch from the Brandon line to the truck route, which is the additional three-tenths of a mile. That's at least as Chad has explained that to me. So, um... The numbers you see there for the overall price of two-hundred-seventy-five thousand nine-hundred-sixty-eight dollars, again, an estimate based on their ton, per ton cost, would, if the select board is looking for ways to economize, leave the town with a fully done project with about fifty thousand dollars left over, which could be something you look at when you're trying to save taxpayer dollars. Another option, I'm sure, which Chad is prepared to talk about, is if the board wished alternatively to max out on this good price and use all the budget authority of three-hundred-twenty-seven thousand, I think that would buy us a substantial portion of resurfacing on Whipple Hollow. So why don't you take that away Chad?
Yeah, um... Yeah, that would, to the current price to go from the end of Candle Hill to the Grand Line, I'll probably worry. So that, uh, additional money in the budget, approximately fifty-one thousand, that would cover about six-tenths of a mile. My thought was, starting with the hollow where we ended a reconstruction last year, head towards, it'd be just a little Markeelski road, so that would end up. And then, which, my hope is to pave Whipple Hollow next year, which, that would cut out, uh, six-tenths, so it's leaving three, three-point-two mile of Whipple Hollow to do rather than on the Ford line.
But I remember, we pushed off some of our paving in the past to save us some bucks. If we got extra bucks this year, we gotta spend them.
How's time to do it?
Maybe get a better price than this.
So, all right, I'm a little bit confused, which isn't abnormal. So we're talking from Hollister to the Brandon Town Line, correct?
No.
Or we're talking the whole road?
The whole road.
We're talking the whole road?
Truck route to Brandon.
Truck route, okay. Plus, well, the little, yeah, right, okay. And then what about, uh, down by Harvey Farms? Are you planning on doing something with that?
That's my next question. That's either gonna be ground up or...
What, 'cause that's clearly probably the worst section of road in the entire town. Now granted, it's not gonna get any worse, so...
There are a couple smooth spots there, we just paved over our culvert cut.
Oh, you did, okay. They weren't paved the last time I was down through there.
Oh, it's finished today.
Okay.
I'm meeting actually with Brian Sanderson tomorrow. Then we're gonna, we have a couple, couple locations, but one of them being that section of West Creek Road. It's a couple options, so... Get from there. I'll see where we go from there.
What we have done is, um, in this crazy COVID year, we did supply a couple of grant applications, one for a structure on West Creek Road, and one for the kind of grinding, mill and fill, um, and paving of, I think, at least half of the one mi, one-mile stretch of West Creek Road South. And who knows? I think it's entirely possible that with towns not watching the ball, we might have less competition for those Class II grants than we usually get, which means usually we're having to wait three or four years. It might be that there's very little appetite, even though there might still be V-Trans money for those grants. So I'd say, even though we don't know when those decisions will be made, probably makes some sense to wait and see if we get a grant for West Creek Road South. But if we don't get a grant, Chief Hooker is absolutely right. One thing we could at least do is to, is to grind it up as a precursor to resurfacing at some future time when we can afford it.
On the West Creek Road, we were gonna replace some culverts. That's really not already for a good finish, Goldil.
We've done...
No, it is, that's done.
We've done, we've done all the culverts except for one big structure.
The bridge, basically, hung out there.
That's right. So we, we are gonna, and that was a grant funded, this small covert replacements that was just finished, and I guess just resurfaced on the covert tops. Um, so, we're gonna get grant money for that work.
If the road is ready for this paving, if we were to...
Yeah, with the exception of that structure.
That one structure. Well, there's a hundred feet probably there, you wouldn't wanna do it until... So I guess my question is, do we want to fix that road and not do Whipple Hollow? Because you're talking about, gotta be close to the same distance.
Well, fifty-one thousand won't do West Creek Road South.
It won't?
I think we had calculated Chad, um... Grinding, milling, filling some extra material to build up the height a bit, um, at something close to two-hundred, two-hundred-twenty thousand, kind of maximizing out, maximizing out on the hundred-seventy-five thousand dollar, eighty percent grant that might be available. Is that about right Chad?
Yeah, yeah, that's about right, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
So that's why we were better off spending our money on the paving. And then we got the grant money for...
Get the grant money to fix the road, okay. No, that's, no. So now, I guess the, the second question is, uh... I know we've done no wrap before, is there any disadvantage to using the wrap? Or are we just as well off to save the money and put that fifteen percent wrap in Chad? What are your feelings?
Uh, the last few years, we used the wrap and it worked out well for us. But it'd be no problem, save money and get the more material down.
Okay.
Hank can remember a project about ten or twelve years ago, which we had a lot of wrap in it and didn't perform well, is that right Hank?
Well, that was at least fifteen years ago, that was truck route.
Yeah.
Oh, when you did the bridge and it all slumped off?
No, 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 the whole road.
The whole road.
Whole road slumped off.
Oh, yeah?
And one, one of the pavings and Pike supplied the material. And we held back a considerable sum from oil Mr. Wilson, we got them up here after the framing for a month or so.
That's before my time, I think.
After, after, after a month or so of ranaway, we decided not to pan.
Yeah.
Other work they've done, and we had to go fix it next week.
Funny how that works.
I think maybe the technology is getting better because, um...
Most of all, probably.
A lot of towns are using the wrap, and we use a modest amount. Some towns, and I think V-Trans go as high as twenty or thirty percent wrap. And so ours is a pretty modest amount.
That was, we were pretty young, we were saying.
Huh.
A car, and something go in from a car. You put them under a cart, and not even knock it in a truck.
So it just...
That was awful.
Huh.
And then ran all back up.
Didn't get, probably didn't get enough something in it to bond it.
Bind it.
Bind it, yeah.
Too much in it.
Oh, some, yeah, something, yeah.
I never did get anything, you know.
I was gonna say, put too much into it, it doesn't look like it was stopped.
Okay, I guess my only other concern is, like, last year, granted, that was a different paver than we're probably gonna go with this year, but we ran way over budget because they used a lot more asphalt than we planned on. Is there any way to try to, we need, if we're gonna do these two projects, we've gotta keep them within budget pretty close.
Well, the good news is here, you're just resurfacing an existing asphalt footprint. There, you were creating new asphalt where there really wasn't, because the road had been reconstructed. I don't know if that might play a role in it.
You, well, yeah, but you would think, I mean, Markeelski's do a pretty good job in that. You wouldn't, you would think, I mean, I, I can see resurfacing existing road because you got dips and dives and whatever, you'd have some inconsistency. But building a brand-new road, to me, there'd be a lot less inconsistency to it, but, I don't know.
Well, if, if you're inclined to say, let's max out on our budget at a amount of three-twenty-seven, I suppose we could look and monitor the slips on West Creek Road and see how much is actually left in the budget before we tell them how far to pave. I would think they'd be able to be flexible like that.
That I would, or, you know, we do West Creek Road, and when we're talking to them and say, you know, and as long as you haven't gone over budget on that, we will also do this section.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you go over budget, we're not doing this other section.
Right, right, right.
Something along that line.
I don't wanna send them the message that we don't want them to do it properly.
Right.
But...
Well, no, but...
But, but that, what we are able to do beyond West Creek Road will depend on what's left in our budget.
Left in the budget, yes, yes.
I think we would vote to extend the full amount at this point. Pending...
Pending the...
Well, we, we can vote to spend the full amount.
That's what I'm saying.
And then, you know, West Creek Road gets done, and as long as there's extra money, this will be the section, it'll be the section Whipple Hollow.
All right, more, should we spend the three-hundred-and-twenty-seven pounds, was it?
Yeah.
On paving? That doesn't bother you, does it?
Are you gonna name a vendor?
Well, yes.
Will.
What? At the amount of, with fifteen percent wrap at fifty-six thirty-two per ton.
Fifty-six thirty-two, yeah. That pointed interesting how much their price lowered after last year, remember? Because he was kind of upset that he didn't get the bid.
DNF, DNF is exactly the same amount.
Same as last year, yeah, yeah.
I looked at those today.
Yeah. I'll second that motion. Hank's looking for a second.
Further discussion? Both say aye?
Aye.
If both say no? Hold is carried.
Very good, I think you're off Chad, have a good night.
Thanks Chad.
Next with review, and I got a special request for our extension of time. Mr. Van Lys.
Yes, um, we have a reporter too from Lisa Wright, um, who, yes. Who correctly, who correctly notes that, again, the ed taxes, the tax rates won't be here till August first. And she's been offered the possibility by the Division of Evaluation up in the state to, um, seek a automatically granted extension of setting, of submitting their grant list, which is normally done in middle of June. But, um, this would provide her, you know, up to, I think, an additional month, of which she thinks she might only need a couple of weeks. Um, so, that's her request to get the select board to agree that she will submit her grant list about two weeks late.
That clouds the situation?
It doesn't, because everything else is on, is on hold while we wait for the education tax rates.
Normal year, wouldn't be a problem.
Right.
Now, why, my question, Butch should be on here, but we've known for quite some time they weren't gonna have this till August. This isn't a COVID thing. What's the deal with that?
Well, the, all I can do is read to you what she has sent to me. She says, we are close, that is, to...
Oh, no, no, that's not, no, what I'm asking is the state. Why are, no, I understand her, but why is, why does the state know since the beginning of the year that they weren't gonna get their work done in time?
I don't know. And you're saying it's not COVID-related, I had assumed...
No, because it, it's been right along, hasn't it? It's been since like February, they were saying they weren't gonna have the rates until later.
Okay, I don't really answer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, but that's... Spending too much time doing other stuff they shouldn't be doing, I guess. But anyway, okay, no, I, I will make a motion to give her the four weeks if she wants it. That's allowed.
Further discussion? Both say aye?
Aye.
If both say no? Hold is carried.
And that authorizes Hank to sign off on the requested letter there.
Do you just wanna make it as an extension? With the only date, because...
Well, I said four weeks, which is, well, that was the maximum amount of time allowed, so I believe.
Next is a grant application for... Hope he's broadband?
Yes, and Butch, Butch spoke about this earlier, Mr. Chairman. There is a real recognition with COVID-nineteen and people trying to work from home that our internet is not as fast as it could or should be, especially in remote rural locations. And so, um, the Regional Planning Commission, with the support of several other member towns, and our legislative delegation consisting of Butch and Stephanie, are all actively encouraging Pittsburgh to sign off on a letter supporting their grant application. And as you'll see from your materials, there's no financial obligation on the part of the town at this point.
All right, motion is supported.
I'll, I'll second it, but I have, I wanna make a comment. My comment is, the state spent millions seven years ago, eight years ago, for broadband all over the state. It was under Mr. Shumlin. And here, and I, no, I brought this up at the last meeting. Finally, it'll be seven years this summer that thing's been sitting on my silo. They just turned it on. And, and I don't, this grant is fine, I'm not gonna vote against it. But it bothers me that they spend this money and then they don't follow through on it. And, and I don't know if V-TEL has gotten hold of pit, people in Pittsburgh to let them know that this internet is available yet.
Yeah, I know, two pockets.
So, that's just my two cents on it, so...
Any other comments? Both say aye?
Aye.
If both say no? Hold is carried. John, isn't this a little different sign right here?
Yeah, I believe so, you have different letters for different purposes, yes, that's the one. Lee Cars was never on that conference call, although she wanted to speak to her particular issue. Perhaps you wanna table that to another time, or... Let me get Randy, who's the last speaker tonight. Randy, you're up. We got a special... We've got a special chair for you.
Well, they shouldn't be, because they're, it's pulling them right around. You need to get the mask that goes here, here, and here.
I had mine pulled, I had to go to the power.
Well, that comes with the glasses.
Yeah, see, the ones I get pull the other way, they go around the back of your head. Those aren't uncomfortable. I couldn't stand those behind my ear. Those go behind your head? Yeah, yeah, that's the con, yeah. Yeah, a lot better.
Where's Randy? He's coming. Randy, have a seat. You can sit up closer if you'd like. You're six feet apart.
Yeah, that would be good if you sat up closer.
Closer?
Closer.
Closer?
Closer.
Closer, more, more, closer, more.
There you go.
Hey, Randy, you can come right up close.
We don't allow John, we don't allow John in here, but...
All right. Okay, Randy's gonna fill us in on the proposed revisionary fees.
Recomend the, yeah. Recomend the has a, has proposed to keep the same as last year. Last year we up, up them.
What do these fees cover, Randy? What kinds of things, like the rental of the pavilion and that kind of thing?
Yeah.
So all fees remain the same?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We don't have to take any action?
No, we don't need to do anything, they say the same.
Right.
So people the same?
They also, we nominated the same chair, vice chair. Recomend Kathy Scherzle, the vice, and Rob Ketchum.
The women's Jane?
Nothing of Jane there.
No action.
No, no action, okay.
Do we, does the board need to approve that slate, Randy, or just take no action?
No, it's the same slate, we don't have to, okay. And next one is question of regulation of program.
Yeah. Been a crazy, crazy year, huh? Our programs have been canceled. Yeah.
I mentioned, Randy, how difficult it is to just get that summer camp together.
Yeah. I gotta say, the McClure Library's been bending over backwards. I just wanna make sure I say that in public, but McClure Library, so...
So you're having, I know the school shut you off from being there, but the library has opened up so you can use their facilities for, if you need to?
Yes, but, okay, have we, we haven't made a final decision yet if we're gonna run it, 'cause the pricing is gonna be, would have to be a lot more unless we reduce the rate.
Oh, because of the safety stuff that you gotta do and all the stipulations?
Numbers are less.
Are we still looking good for swimming coming up, Randy?
We're working on that, too. We had our first Zoom meeting with lifeguards last Thursday, trying to come up with a plan to get lifeguards recertified at this point. That's a difficult thing, too, because they can't be touching each other. I've been going to a, a wrecking park meetings once a week now, Zoom meetings, and that's been very, very informative. And yesterday I heard where one, one town is, get away from that social distance and then they're working with their, like, siblings as their, like, dummies. So I gotta, I've, we've been, I've been working with a Red Cross organizer in the, then a separate lifeguard instructor, have an agreement set up, but not until Red Cross says, Red Cross, until Red Cross says that they can.
Does that explain why all of my siblings always called me dummy when I was growing up?
I, I highly doubt that, yeah, but I'm just, just...
Just throwing that out.
Just throwing that out.
Anything's possible.
So the lifeguard shelters taken, taken off, Rob Ketchum has bought material from the valleys, or we bought and started building that. Working on brush hog for the disc golf course. Got a donation this week from Heritage Family Credit Union of $150 this week, just unknown something. And also got an instant message today from a Dan Provost about donation for, disc golf donation for loved ones or lost loved ones. We also have had $100 come back, $200 come back to us from the canceled 20-point trail run. These are letters out to all of the, to all the different folks. G-Sto Motors and, G-Sto Motors and Falco both sponsored, $100 each. Any questions? Wreckers are very active. Thank you to the highway guys. They came down and graded the entrance, put up a new gate up by basketball court where the, where the basketball goes through. Instead of the pool now, it's a gate. And put up the basketball hoop, so those are up, our signs are up. There's a lot of extra signs out now, so that's been cumbersome every time, so changes.
Anything else?
Give up the good work, are you gonna?
Yeah, great job, Randy. It's a difficult time, and you're doing very well, Randy.
You want to go, you can do it.
Thank you for all the time today.
It's tough when they keep changing the rules, twice a week.
Not every day they change it, it's comfortable.
Yeah.
That over with it.
Oh, no.
Well, I paid him on the list. What is a VLCT?
Yeah, it's a resolution, you know, asking for federal assistance. I think VLCT has pooled in with the National League of Cities, and there's gonna be a nationwide push from towns, cities...
Thanks, Randy.
And other municipalities, thanks, Randy, to see about playing a role in this upcoming negotiation about whether there'll be federal money available to localities to help with the response to the COVID virus. And so this would just add our voice to other towns around the mall.
Need a motion?
Need a motion. I'll second it. Further discussion? All the members say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? Motion's carried. What was that motion? To approve the petition of VLCT.
Oh, two, four, so it was probably before, that makes sense, yeah, that could be.
And why I said that, because these...
What was that one? To stop them back, if that were, yeah, that could be.
I just, I just...
Makes sense.
I'm gonna push it up to the top there.
Yeah.
That would hold the phone, I'll call it out.
So someone...
18 months, 18 months of battery. I think I should get three battery here, though.
Sure.
Hank, if, if the fire department can get three batteries for their saws, I'll, I think you're entitled to a backup battery for you. That being it for the open meetings. Please, in fact, thank you, thank you, again, to them.